All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of the Orange County School Board. We're so glad to have you all with us this evening, and I hope everybody had a wonderful summer. It's about to end on Monday, at least in my household with two kids in school, so I'm sure in a lot of your households as well. I'd like to ask everybody to please begin this meeting by standing and joining us in a moment of silence, and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. All right, before we get started into our regular agenda, we would like to recognize a few staff members in our room with us this evening. If you've ever been on the ninth floor of our building, you will notice that we don't have a lot of wall space left up there, and that's because our Communications Division, which we're so incredibly proud of, has won a great number of awards, and we think it's very, very important on this board to have effective communications with our community. I always like to say, and I are the board members too, when it comes to public education, reputation matters. It matters immensely because parents have choices, they have a myriad of choices other than the local neighborhood public school. But this board, we still believe that the local neighborhood public school is still the best education option for our children, and because of that, we work so very, very hard to communicate effectively with our community. Our Communications Division does this, working in graphic design, marketing campaigns. They also produce academic and business collateral pieces, video productions. They conduct fundraising campaigns, and although-
Nancy Robinson-
Hi, Nancy.
...has joined the conference.
Hey.
Hey, Mrs. Robinson is joining us. She's not able to be with us today, but thank you for phoning in, Nancy. And on occasion, they also have to engage, and we hope rare occasion, in crisis communications, something we think that they are particularly good at. Over the last year alone, our newly-formed Marketing and Events Department has been busy producing stellar, award-winning material on behalf of the district individual departments and our superintendent, and they have received no less than 11 awards this year from local, state, and national organizations. That is a record number for Orange County public schools, and the quarterback of that team, and someone who's been with us for quite a while and someone we all admire immensely, is with us this evening, and that is Mr. Dylan Thomas. Dylan, please stand and come to the podium and share with us a little bit about your department, and thank you for all you do for us, Dylan.
Well, thank you very much, Chair. I want to let you know that, let's see, we got a slideshow set, we'll be good to go. Here we go. So during the 2016-17 school year, the Public Relations Team in Marketing and Events earned 11 awards, and they were from, as you mentioned, various local, regional, and national organizations that recognize excellence within the public relations profession. Organizations include the Florida Public Relations Association, the Public Relations Society of America, the Sunshine District, the Sunshine State School Public Relations Association, and the National School Public Relations Association. The product of our work is to demonstrate the district's vision and mission to be the top producer of successful students in the nation, and are leading them to success with the support and involvement of families in the community. So a very key sector of that community of ours is our employees, and one of the big award winners this year connected our employees to the schools they attended as students. The Orange Peel is our monthly employee newsletter, and in the fall, a massive undertaking by the Public Relations Staff produced a compelling three award-winning edition called "The Grads Are Back." Pictures from 450 employees came pouring in with old yearbook photos, including some of current board members, that were featured in the homecoming issue. Many of those pictures went viral on social media as we promoted Spirit Week around the district. Seventy-nine work sites and schools participated, and everybody who read the issue got a strong sense of, "We are OCPS." So beyond the "Grads are back," the breakdown of the awards we received, four were for "Grads are back." We won on the local and regional level from the Florida PR Association, an Image Award, from the Florida PR Association, a Judges Award for Internal Communications Campaign. From the Public Relations Society of America, we received the Radiance Award, an Award of Commendation, again, for Internal Communication Campaign. And finally, in the SunSpro Sunshine Medallion Awards, we received a medallion award for our themed promotion for a large district. Seven of our awards were received at the national level from the National School Public Relations Association. The first I can show you, and there are samples at your places up there of some of the items that we've produced up on top of your cubbies. One was our annual report for 2015-16, which received an Award of Excellence, which is the top national award from EnSpro. We received a Branding Image Award for our Too Smart to Start Program, that was a Superintendent Advisory Council project. It also received an Award of Excellence. For the Internal Audit Department, we produced a finance publication that won an Award of Excellence, and in the special purpose publication area, we won an Award of Excellence for our Hall of Fame program. Second to the Awards of Excellence are Awards of Merit, and in the Awards of Merit, we received one for our Orange County School Counselor Association Student Services Recognition Ceremony for a speech we composed for the superintendent. And we also received an Award of Merit for our Pocket Guide, which is historically a big winner with the National School Public Relations Association, and received an Award of Merit this year. And finally, we received an Honorable Mention for our entire series of print newsletters, the Orange Peel being our vehicle for that practice. So I don't do all this. Who is responsible for this? Let me ask them to come forward, if you would, please. Mr. Jason Smith, our Assistant Director, our Senior Manager Shayla Kennedy, and our Senior Specialist Wendy Gustama. You three would please join us. Now, as great as they are, you have to understand, the people who do the hard work are our graphics team, who are not able to be with us tonight, and that is Kim Bolnoy and Eddie Hernandez, and they're, everybody knows that. So to assist with the presentation of the certificates that Shayla brought forth for me-
Thanks Shayla for that.
-Mr. Howitt will provide the honors.
Thanks for bringing those down.
Now, as you can see, Shayla and Wendy are very well dressed this evening, and that's because in about two hours, they'll be at the Florida Public Relations Association Award Show, where they will announce winners of 2017 Golden Image Awards, and the ladies will be there looking for more honor, recognition, and hardware for their Orange Peel entry, "The Grads Are Back," which was clearly a big, popular winner. So let's wish them good luck, and congratulations. Thank you very much.
You know, I've been reflecting on what it was like when I first came on the school board and how our story was told in the media, and it wasn't being told positively. We knew when it was sweeps around here just by what stories were running on the news, and they used to promo it for a whole week before they would run the bad story. And as many of you know, I've been home recovering from knee surgery, and I have watched a lot of news and a lot of TV, and I have to tell you, the coverage that we have been getting from the schools that were opening, the story that could have been negative about the buses, that, you know, we had one bus catch on fire, and somebody wanted to make it seem like it was a huge problem, and the story that came out with Bill Wynn showing all of the things we do to assure student safety, and the checkpoints, and that those buses are inspected every 30 days. It's like, it's really fun to see now that a lot of what we have worked very, very hard on for many, many years, the story is now being told that OCPS is a good place. It's a good place to work, it's a good place for our kids to come to school, it is an economic driver here in this community. Our building program keeps a lot of people in business, our maintenance program. So thank you for telling the stories, thank you for connecting our employees to one another, and all you do, you know, the Hall of Fame, Teacher of the Year, Support Person of the Year, the Retirement Celebration, they're all celebrating the success of our employees. And so thank you for telling stories and making us look good.
Well said, Ms. Cadel. Ms. Moore.
Yeah, congratulations to the entire department. You're never too busy to help us with our little projects, and I can tell you how many times over the years when we've had guests from other districts, and we have discussions about what is going on with their community, the support that they have from the constituents, and it always comes back to your department. And so how many times have we grabbed ones, so just come upstairs with us and let you meet some of the folks in the department. So you're having an impact on other districts, and we're going to be hosting another district coming up, and I'm sure you will come up in conversation again. So congratulations.
Thank you. Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I too want to express how I feel about you guys. You're just awesome. I think I usually go to Dr. Jenkins and say, "I need this, I need this, I need this," and you always delivered. And I had Patty Levine when you came on, Dylan, and Patty just would do a fantastic job. And then, Dr. Jenkins, you all gave me, and Mr. Block, you gave me Kathy, Kathy Marsh, that just did a great job, and then I end up with Jason, and I'm talking about the speech writing department, because a lot of times, people say, "Well, where did you get that speech?" or whatever. So normally, and especially a lot of the graduation speeches, which are just excellent, unbelievable. I had so many calls, and I've even had big companies ask me to put all of those graduation speeches together, which one company did, and then I didn't like what I sounded like, so I didn't do it. But the public loved it, and I just thought it was just awesome. But you guys have done a great job on all of the projects that every board member has asked you to do. I just think Kim, I did herself with the artwork, Dr. Jenkins sneaked a peek on us and had her to put the OCPS ace thing together, but just so many things you have done in School Board District Five. And everything I ask you for, the Black History Program is one of the best, it gets televised, often the meet and greet is just, I could go on and on. But I do want to just give Patty and Jason and even Kathy a shout-out, because a couple of the people asked the other day if I could send a speech. They're doing a graduation coming up in December, and they wanted Jason's speech. So I said, "Only if you do like Ronald Reagan," you know, written by Jason, but delivered by. So the main thing is that, I normally say that even at graduation, I would just get up and say, "Hey, written by Jason, but delivered by Cat Lord." And I think, you know, and everybody just loves it, but I just thank you all for giving us that humor and learning our personalities and understanding what we like, and with Wendy and Shayla coming on, and all of them, everybody, we can call all the names, Sherry, every one of your department, Lauren, everybody does a great job for us, and we thank you, because if you don't, we let you know. So thank you so very much. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Well, again, thank you so much, and Dr. Jenkins, thank you for your leadership on this, and I always believe props should be given where props are due. And Ms. Cadel, you and Mrs. Gordon were here, I believe, when we formed this department. I believe it was really one of your brainchild's and something that really needed to be done a decade ago, so you had incredible foresight in doing that. And members of the audience, it's not just the media relations that they do, and they do that very effectively, probably issuing, I would guess what, five to 10 press releases per week throughout the year. They also put together large events, Hall of Fame dinners, 300-plus, 400-plus, Teacher of the Year, 300-400-plus, Support Person of the Year, State of the Schools, Super Scholars, on and on and on. So they're a busy department, and it's shown, and I think that the results are really reflected in the support our community gives us. We have effectively renewed the one mil property tax, which allows us to retain highly-qualified teachers, and really has kept us afloat during the recession and thereafter, and we have succeeded in renewing the half-cent sales tax and passing it originally, which is allowing us to renovate over 150 schools, and we've opened up 42 new schools in the last 13 years alone, and this year alone, we're opening up six new schools. And none of that would be possible without the support of our community in a literal sense. So in a literal sense as well, Mr. Thomas, thank you for making us look so good. Jason, Shayla, excuse me, and Wendy, thank you so much, and Mr. Howitt, thank you for your leadership as well, and Kathy Marsh as well, and anybody else I forgot to mention. So thank you for all you do for us. All right, we are now going to go to our strategic plan update. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. It is that time of year, as we go through our district scorecard, we do have some of our outcomes for intense focus on student achievement. You will recall, some of those indicators will not be available until October, as we are backlog by the state and those that provide some of our high school outcomes, but we did want to share with you those indicators that are available at this point. Deputy Superintendent Dr. Jesus Jara will walk you through those indicators now available.
Thank you, Superintendent, and good evening, board members. And as Superintendent mentioned, this is Part A, and before I start, I'd like to let you know that I am here on behalf of wonderful area superintendents and CAO and all our school principals who have delivered on these results. So if we can start, we're looking at Meeting State Standards. Again, this is 310. We had a 1% increase in our ELA. In mathematics, we also had a 1% increase as well. One of the things that I'd like to point out as well is that our increase, predominantly our highest results were in our elementary, up in the work, and really had 26 of our elementary schools that had a 10 percentage point increase in our third-grade reading this past academic year. When you look at our learning gains, again, we had a 2% increase in our ELA, again, 310, and we had a slight decrease to 2% increase in our mathematics. One of the things that I'd also like to highlight here as well is when we looked at across the board and are looking at our data, one of the things that I point to, that, again, all our students count in learning gains, but one of the things that I like to highlight that goes on and actually recognized by our media relations team is really that our Algebra I outcomes in middle school, and we are leading the state in Algebra I, and also second in, highest in both participation and performance in middle school geometry as well. So when you look at the DIB, maybe some of the data points that we're seeing is that so many of our middle school students are taking Algebra I and geometry for high school credit. Our achievement gaps, we made some nice gains in our mathematics. All subgroups had narrowing of the achievement gap, as was communicated in our Leadership Summit by our superintendent, is really an area that we continue to focus. One of the things that I'd like to highlight here is that our ELL had the largest increase, which is the narrowing of the gap, where we had a 9-point increase in our ELL and ELA, in mathematics, I'm sorry, and then in FRL as well. When you look at our ELA, we had two subgroups, ELL and our Free and Reduced Lunch, narrowing the gap. An area for us to continue to focus on is our Black to White and Hispanic and ESC. One of the things that I like to point to-
Dr. Jara, can I interrupt you?
Sure.
We speak in acronym speak a lot of times, because we're used to it, but can you tell anybody watching at home what each of those means?
Sure. Our ELL is English Language Learners-
Thank you.
-and our Free and Reduced Lunch Student Population. I'm sorry, Chairman. And one of the things that, when we're looking at our achievement gap, for us, as we're our focus for next year, that we're really district-wide, and we kicked off under the leadership of our Chief Academic Officer, our District PLC, where we're really strategically aligning our literacy efforts all the way down to the classroom teacher. Our early warning signs, when you look at what we're seeing here, is that we had 500 fewer students, had two or more early warning indicators, and the early warning indicators that you see or that we report on is attendance rate below 90%, are some students failing one or two in ELA or mathematics, a score of Level 1 in our ELA or math assessment, and one or more suspension. So we had 500 fewer students the last academic year. One of the things that our area of focus for us is, we're looking at really kicking off in a really intensive support intervention for attendance, because we know, and our research is clear, that if students are in school, we're going to see an increase in student achievement. Our negative behaviors, again, all looking positive. When you look at the bullying, we saw an increase of four points, but again, bringing you back below the baseline of 277 from our baseline year. But again, as we continue to track, the data is trending. I think our work, and really with our schools, the great work that they're doing in cultural responsive support and training, our restorative justice efforts, is really, an effort here is to change the behavior of our students. And the last data point that you will see here, this is from our Advanced Ed Survey that we submit annually, and our homes and our schools completed with our families, and again, here what we're seeing, our trend data is positive, except in some of the grade levels, when you look at the early elementary in K2, where we saw a slight .04 decrease here, and again, it's really getting to more of the climate and culture of our schools, and again, getting a comprehensive view, not only our students, our teachers, but our families as well. And to that, I'd turn it over to the Superintendent.
If board members, questions or comments? Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, can I have Dr. Jara go back to, I think it's slide four or five? Yes, and I really want to thank our superintendent. We're not pleased about this. I think the whole board has kind of voiced the red part, the red part for 2015, and even the red part for 2016-17, but because of what Dr. Jenkins have put in place upon the request of the board and other programs, I do want the public to know, and if you could share with them some of the things we're doing, and I'm going to go back and ask Dr. Jenkins to, I don't want to put you on the spot, Dr. Jenkins, but if you cannot remember, but we would bring in, she would bring in all of the principals to address the boards, and those were those schools that were very challenged, and what they had planned to do, and they often spoke about the Level Ones and Level Twos in those schools, about nine of 13 of them, I think you'll see where I'm coming, that those students were really kind of difficult, and was a major challenge for them, and it was hard to get them to school, get them to stay after school, get them to be in different activities, and even have mentors to work with them. So because of the action that this board has taken on most of the schools in the minority neighborhood, I'm sure that, Dr. Jenkins, that if you could just address some of the things that we are doing that this will change. The gap should be extremely gone next year. It should be not, you know, it should be much, much better. It takes a while to get where we're going, but I have a feeling the direction that you are leading, if you could just let the public know, the board already know, a little bit of the direction in which you are going to erase this achievement gap. That's where I'm getting.
Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Gordon, I'm glad you brought that up. So there are several initiatives in place. If you recall, when we had our work session with the Minority Achievement Office, this board approved, four years ago, funding to be put in place to specifically pinpoint some programs that would be designated to help those groups that are marginalized and potentially underserved, that we might capture that talent and help to accelerate some of that achievement. The indicators are extremely positive. In those pilot groups that we've used, in those schools where we knew we had the greatest need, we see very positive trends. So the process is, and Dr. Lawson will tell you, the intention is not to get everyone into a pilot program. The process is that they incubate a program like the Calculus Project, which has several children, children of color and children from challenging socioeconomic backgrounds, taking higher-level mathematics courses. Very positive outcomes. Once it's been done in R&amp;D, Research and Development, then it is spread throughout the district to 186 schools. And so we're at that process now of going from R&amp;D to production, and so we expect to see tremendous gains over the next year as those projects move into production, if you will, forgive me for making it seem so simple, because we're not producing widgets. But as they move from where we've seen extreme, extremely impressive outcomes into production in all of our schools, we intend to see greater gains district-wide as well. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Let me also mention, our principals are focusing on those gaps. If you attend to them, and make sure you're addressing those students who are on the bubble, those students who are, who may just need a little additional assistance to get over that hump to proficiency, we believe we can see some differences as well. And so if you notice the difference in those who went from, those areas, subgroups that went from red to green in a single year, we're pleased with. We like to see them all in green, meaning they're moving in a positive trajectory in the coming year. It is true that it may take some time to move some of those stubborn numbers, but our principals are committed to it. We have the finest teachers, not just in the state, we believe in the nation. We have a leadership team that is focused on it, and while we understand our growth may dilute our progress from year to year, if we get 5,000 more students, and some of them challenging and potentially not having English skills, it may be an increased challenge for us, but we won't make excuses. We will serve our students and continue to narrow those gaps. Thank you for letting me speak to that, Ms. Gordon.
Well, thank you.
Ms. Gordon.
I thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, because a lot of people are really not aware of what has been put in place, what is already functioning, and what you plan to do for the 2017-18 school year. And then, and even the facilities, how you've supplied resources within all of the new facilities, where this gap really is, has really been a big help for the different communities throughout. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so very much, Dr. Jara. Dr. Jara, also, with the gap, the College Board, what part, you were very helpful through Dr. Jenkins and yourself, helping us get students involved with the College Board and helping us to close. We've talked about this achievement gap almost all my life, and I know it's time, it's got to close. It is just time to close in Orange County. It's our day. So what are you doing there that you brought out that's helping us countywide?
And thank you, Ms. Gordon. And one of the things that you'll see the results in the second part, once we get our data, our students taking the PSAT in eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade, and 11th grade, and then practicing with the Khan Academy for the SAT, where, as we've shared in the past, where we've seen an increase. Last year, we saw an increase in our performance as well, more students practicing, as you've seen in our video, where actually Oak Ridge High School is highlighted and showcased, where we see students practicing, because one of the things that is just really, the SAT with the changes, really practicing is where you see the improvement. So we've seen some initial great results, and we're looking forward to getting the final data from last year's cohort.
Okay, and I know we are concerned, because even though we did do the Khan Academy- And I know we are concerned because even though we did do the Khan Academy, it's still yet the scores did not come out the way we kind of wanted it to. So what are our goals for the 2017, 18 school year and helping us to, because we did well there, but it didn't come out quite like we wanted it to. And I did not get an opportunity to discuss that. I don't think any of the board members have yet. And I heard that you had some good things in the pipeline.
Well, the team is doing a great job, is really embedding with our Khan Academy in the classroom during the school day where teachers.
So you're kicking off right away? Everybody's registering?
Absolutely, day one.
You didn't have 100% registration, so what is your goal this year?
Well, our goal is always 100%. And one of the things that is making sure that the students link their accounts from the PSAT so they have an SAT study plan. And we were, you know, our council of great city schools recognize, and we won an award as a district because we had the most practice. So, and one of the things that Dr. Boarder and his team is working on is to really recognize and identify the students that had the highest increase so we can award them a scholarship for, you know, with a funding. So one of the things that is continue to celebrate so we get more students involved in practicing for the SAT.
So as soon as you get that goal, can you give it to us so we can be, put that goal somewhere for us when we go and visit the campuses, we can find out if they are trying to reach that goal?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins, and thank you, Mr. Superintendent and Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Ms. Moore?
Dr. Dar, I wanted to ask you a little bit about the high school math scores. I know you addressed in terms of the higher number of students that met proficiency and were taking higher-level math courses in middle school. So maybe you could address it in two parts in terms of if you think the state's going to adjust the funding model all to compensate for these sort of, this dichotomy of they want acceleration, but then it affects math scores in the high school level.
So I'll try not to predict what the state is going to do. But I mean, one of the things that we're, you know, as we continue to really talk about is this, you know, the we want, we, our mission and our vision is really to place the students in the right course when they're ready and capable. So our efforts will, you know, if they're capable and able to take Algebra I in seventh grade and eighth grade, we're going to continue to place them there. One of the things that Dr. Vasquez and Dr. Boarder, we've really looked at with our high schools is what support that we provide our students who may not be ready for Algebra I is what support systems that we put in place and really to help our teachers to deliver that instruction. So we, we're looking at something that is very similar to what we've done with our AP for a PLC for Algebra I, for our geometry teachers, to do very similar in our high schools. I think we're ready and we're going to see an increase in our Algebra I and comes in mathematics as well.
To Jenkins?
Thank you. I would just love to add to Dr. Jarrah's comments because I kind of like addressing this topic. So at one point, the grading formula used to allow for banking of certain scores, so there was no incentive to save some of those sharp students till you could count them for your high school because there was banking. Well, banking was done away with. So this whole notion of a single grade representing a school is what we probably should try to move further and further away from. Because if I'm a high school principal and Ms. Cadel is my middle school feeder, I may be a little upset with her because she's getting all those, the best students and those high Algebra I scores while they're in middle school. Well, the truth is, that's what's best for children. If you get them in, they can reach calculus and STEM-related fields in college if they're taking algebra in middle school. And so we want to continue to push what's best for the children, not what's best for a particular grading model. So I appreciate you asking that question. Dr. Jarrah and his team are very well focused. You do what's best for the children. We have to push the rigor at the earliest age when they're ready for it. And we're number one in the state for children getting that algebra done in middle school and being successful at it. It puts them on a trajectory for STEM-related careers and calculus before they leave high school, which gets them set up for those careers in college. But it does put, under the current model where there's no banking now, it puts the high school at a disadvantage that those children haven't been saved for their algebra scores when they get to high school. We don't think that's what's best for children.
And thank you for that, Dr. Jenkins. Dr. Jarrah, excellent report. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Jenkins, I think we have some newly appointed administrators to recognize.
We do. It's an exciting time of year, five more days before the first day of school, if you count the weekend. And so we have a few more appointments to get ready. It is an exciting time. Teachers are excited. Everyone's in school getting prepared for our students to come back on Monday. So let me introduce our latest administrators. First, I have Timothy Bombeck, who is a dean at Freedom High School. He will be the new assistant principal at Jackson Middle School.
Thank you, Chairman Soblet. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins and your staff. I have with me today my wife. My kids are not here, but my family means a lot to me and this opportunity. Also, my patriot family is behind me as well. I'm going to miss them, but they supported me over the past couple of years and my goals to be an administrator. And I'm looking forward to working at Jackson Middle School with Dr. Maya Patra. Thank you.
Next, we have Nicole Bradshaw Phillips, resource teacher and ESE Services, to be the new assistant principal at Three Points Elementary.
Thank you, Chairman Soblet. Thank you, School Board, and thank you, Dr. Jenkins and your staff. Thank you, Associate Superintendent Vicki Cartwright, and also Dr. Armbruster, where I worked with CTE. I'm excited to be at Three Points Elementary. Oh, I'm sorry. Here's my husband. I forgot to thank him. Oh, my. And my family, who have my children at home tonight. Thank you.
So to get you out of the doghouse, we're going to let your husband stand so everybody can see him. He's hiding his face. Stand up, husband.
That was a good save.
Tabitha Brown, resource teacher and STO, will be the assistant principal at Lockhart Elementary.
Good evening to Chairman Soblet, Board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and staff. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to serve as the assistant principal of Lockhart Elementary. I would like to thank all of my family and friends for all of their support and encouragement throughout this journey. I would also like to thank Associate Superintendent Mrs. Schuler and the rest of my STO family for their support. Special thanks to my principal, Ms. Ella Shanks, and my Lockhart family for their support tonight. To all of my former administrators and mentors, thank you. And lastly, I must acknowledge and thank my grandmother, who raised me to be the woman standing before you today. She passed away a year ago, and today is her birthday.
Kenya Calvin, reading specialist at Washington Shores Elementary, will be the assistant principal at Hiawassee.
I thank you, Chairman Soblet, and the School Board members, as well as Superintendent Jenkins and your staff. I would like to acknowledge Mrs. Schuler, Associate Superintendent, Mrs. Brown Cannon, Dr. Jones, and Dr. Stevens. These individuals have shown me lots of patience, taught me a lot, and have had a huge input, impact on me as a leader. I also like to thank Mrs. Jenkins for putting her trust in me, and I'm going to earn it. And I was at Hiawassee prior, so I'm glad I get to go back home and work there. And I would also like to thank my family. They're very far, so I'd like to thank my family, Las Vegas, Nevada, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and Atlanta, Georgia, who are watching tonight. And of course, I have to thank my parents. If you looked in the dictionary for almost pretty perfect parents, you'd see my parents' pictures. The impact that they've had on my siblings, my friends, my cousins, and everyone else has been so huge, and I'm a reflection of them, and I value that reflection. So thank you also to my Washington Shores family who are here with me, and also my other friends who are also my colleagues. I adore you all, so thank you very much.
Maria Murray, resource teacher at Bonneville, will be the new assistant principal at Dreamlake Elementary.
Good evening, Chairman Soblet, School Board members, Superintendent Jenkins and staff. I thank you for the opportunity to be the assistant principal, serve as the assistant principal at Dreamlake Elementary. I would like to thank my husband and my children, as well as my mentors and my Bonneville family that are here supporting me, as well as I'm excited to join Dreamlake with Ms. Carol Ann. Thank you so much.
Andrew Nelson, who comes from business sector, national sales manager, will be the assistant principal at University High School. Well, they wouldn't let him off work today, okay. Nora Pachnick, resource teacher, Olympia High School, will be the new assistant principal at Olympia High School.
Good evening. I would like to thank Chairman Soblet and the School Board and Dr. Jenkins and her staff for this opportunity to serve the families of Orange County. I'd also like to thank my mentors, Mr. Guy Swenson, Mr. Nick Zambri, and Dr. Glenda Hammonds, as well as all of the staff and family at Olympia High School, and also my own family, my daughter Clara and my mom Lenora. Thank you.
Cheryl Reyes Cuevas, resource teacher at Wakava, to assistant principal at Sunridge Middle.
I would like to thank Chairman Soblet, the School Board, Superintendent Jenkins and her staff, Dr. Jarrah, and my Wakava family, Michelle Erickson and the admin team who made me feel so welcome in my short time here in Orange County. And I'm also looking forward to learning so much from Ms. Bowen Painter and serving the students of Sunridge and Orange County. I would like to thank my husband and my daughter Kayla and my son Ivan, who are live streaming from the different locations that they're in as well. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Shannon Ross, dean at Lake Whitney, will be the new assistant principal at Tildenville Elementary.
I would like to thank Chairman Soblet and the School Board, along with Superintendent Jenkins and her staff, for this opportunity to be at Tildenville Elementary. I would also like to thank Beth Prince and my Lake Whitney Elementary family for their support and guidance over the last few years. I'm also thrilled to be here with my new principal, Agatha Alvarez. My parent, I mean, my children could not be here. Baseball and high school band camp take precedence over that. But I do have my parents and my best friend here, so thank you.
Jared Stewart, dean at Neptune Middle in Osceola, will be the new AP at Discovery Middle.
Thank you, Chairman Soblet, School Board, Dr. Jenkins and staff. I am super excited to be able to serve the students and families at Discovery Middle. I'm here with my lovely wife Melanie and my mom, also Dr. Fernandez, who I get the pleasure to work with, which is going to be an exciting adventure. I also want to say thank you to Jumanah McCottom, who's my current principal at Neptune Middle, who hopefully is watching. They have opened house tonight in Osceola County, so she couldn't be here. But thank you again for the opportunity. I'm really looking forward to it.
Courtney Wilson, resource teacher at Rock Lake, will be the new assistant principal at College Park Middle.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Chairman Soblet, Board members, Superintendent Jenkins and your staff for this opportunity to serve as the assistant principal at College Park Middle School. I have with me tonight my family, my husband Tim, who teaches at Acceleration West. This is my mom Suzie, she teaches at Howard Middle School. I've got my son Cameron, who just enlisted as a US Marine. I've got my son Clay, who's a sophomore at Apopka High School. I'd also like to thank my older son Connor, he's serving in the United States Air Force. I'd like to thank my mentors, Ms. Schuler, Ms. Brown Cannon, Dr. Balgobin, and Doctors Cartwright. Thank you so much.
Shalonda Jenkins. Shalonda Jenkins, program specialist in our math department, will be the assistant principal at Prairie Lake Elementary.
Good evening, Chairman Soblet, Board members, Superintendent Jenkins and staff. I thank you for the opportunity to serve as the assistant principal at Prairie Lake Elementary. I would like to thank my Prairie Lake Elementary family for coming here to support me tonight. And I would also like to thank Dr. Ella Thompson for her support and mentorship. Thank you.
Ebony Montenegro, program specialist in elementary, to assistant principal at Tangelo Park Elementary.
Good evening. I would like to thank Chairman Soblet, Board members, and Superintendent Dr. Jenkins and her staff for this opportunity to serve as the assistant principal of Tangelo Park Elementary. I would also like to thank my mentors, Dr. Tracy Ocasio, Dr. Matthews, and Meg Bowen, curriculum and instruction team, and anyone else who's had a hand in helping me and mentoring me thus far. Additionally, my sincere gratitude to my family and my friends, my husband, who continues to be a driving force in my life, my mother, my father, and my Glover family. Tonight with me also have my aunt Marcia Goodwin with me, my mother and father-in-law, and my best friend, and I believe some of my other family members in the back. I look forward to working with the Tangelo Park Elementary, the community, and board member, Ms. Gordon. Thank you all.
I thought that was Marcia. Look how proud that aunt is. Allison Muse is the last announcement, from assistant principal at Three Points to principal at Lake Silver Elementary.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Chairman Soblet, the School Board, Dr. Jenkins and her team. This would not be possible without the continued support of my amazing husband Wayne, our two wonderful daughters, Skylar and Peyton, along with my parents and friends. I'd also like to recognize the following people for their mentorship, Pamela Sanders, Dr. Joy Taylor, Mary Bridges, Bob Schrefler, Jessica Abreu, and last but definitely not least, Charles Lindlaw. I look forward to serving Lake Silver Elementary School and its community alongside with Mrs. Robinson.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, lots of brain power out there. You can just feel the energy and the excitement. So congratulations to everyone. For District Two, I wanted to welcome Timothy Bomback at Jackson Middle, Nicole Bradshaw Phillips, Three Points, good save by the way with the hubby there, Jared Stewart at Discovery. So, you know, congratulations. And Ally Muse, congratulations. Yeah, we were on the relay for life. She was ahead of it, or out there in the east. She was chair for many years. So congratulations, everyone.
Mrs. Robinson?
Hi there. How is everybody?
Good.
Feel free to just look up at the ceiling.
Sounds like the voice of God.
You know it is. You know it is. I just wanted to congratulate all the new appointees tonight, and I'm so sad that I'm not there to meet a few of my new ones coming to a few of my District Six schools. But to my newbies coming to Lake Silver and College Park Middle, I will get out there very soon to meet you face to face, and I look forward to working with you. And congratulations to everybody. Enjoy your night. Everybody sounds happy. Take that happiness and turn it into some big fun next week.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. Thanks for calling in. Mrs. Gordon?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm excited too. Jared's going with Daryl. You're in good hands. I thank Dr. John Wright. You're in a great, you're in a great team. You came from a great team, but you're going to be such an asset. And you're in good hands with Daryl Flynn, I'm telling you. I would like, just Ebony, everybody you invited, can they just stand? There you go. I want you to give them a hand. And the reason, and everybody up here is recognizing everybody, because you know why? We need Ebony. We really thank you for coming to Tangelo Park Elementary School, because we're going to sign up everybody here with Dr. Lawson in our mentoring program. We need every, even the baby. We need the baby up there. We need the baby up there. So we really, we need you guys. And I know you're going to follow Ebony. I know you're going to be her backbone like you are. And yes, I wanted you personally to let you know, we need you. I think you already know that when you came out. Some of you came out and saw the school. And you know it's a great school. You know you have great partners out there. You've got a great community out there. But you can't center out there alone. So like you marched in here tonight. I'm really asking you to personally, and I'm serious about this, personally sign up somewhere to help Ebony push us to the top, along with Ms. Wright. All righty, thank you so very much, and we love you, and congratulations, Ebony. And everybody else, you are on your way to success because you're doing what you want to do, and that's important.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Ms. Moore.
This is going to be challenging because I have five new Assistant Principals. So I think I'm going to be doing a little bit of school visiting. So hopefully I will get you all correct. So Tapath at Lockhart, you are an answer to prayer. That's why they scream louder than anybody. We haven't had an Assistant Principal at Lockhart Elementary. And so Ella's been holding down the fort by herself. So I just know you are going to be loved and put to work right away. Have you moved into your office? Okay, well, I know I'm going to see you all on Friday. So, okay, Dream Lake. And it's Ms. Marie, right? There she is. Welcome to the Dragons. And I'm sure I will get by to share some great stories with you. I actually have another story that can't be shared in this audience about Dream Lake. Now, I tell the kids, it's not, actually not the school, but the history of the lake and some things. I learned some more gory details. So I ask the kids, do you want to hear a scary story? And of course, they always say yes. So I'll have to run this one by you and your principal to be sure it's worthy of sharing with 10-year-olds next year. But anyway, something very juicy. And then we have Cheryl. Is it Cuevos at Sunridge? And so you moved from the north part of my district at Wakava down to the far southwest. But you will absolutely love Sunridge. And I saw pictures of you passing out the laptops the other day. And it looks like you have an excited student body. And I hope they really welcome you there. So welcome aboard. And then, I guess it's Shannon over at Tildenville. There she is back there. So I look forward to getting to know you better. We're going to have some exciting things happening this year and look forward to sharing those with you. I have to put Courtney in there because I heard Apopka High School. So you must live in Apopka. So one of these days, maybe they'll let you out of College Park and come back to the, come back to the north, huh? She says no, she likes it down there. Okay, all right. And then Shalonda over at Prairie Lake. It's so nice of your team to all wear purple. They are so proud of that purple. You remember Board that we gave that school a new name? And they showed up all over on this side. So you're still proud of your purple. I'm a Viking. That was my favorite pro football team because I was born in Minnesota. So when I see you in that purple, it reminds me of my home. But anyway, I know you'll do wonderfully at that school. You guys, I was so proud of you this year. When I saw the school grades, Dr. Jenkins, my first phone call was to Dr. Strength because I was just so happy. You have worked so hard. So I know you'll be a welcome part of the team. So congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Well, to all our newly appointed Ministers, congratulations. This Board appreciates well-behaved children, and we have some great ones in the audience. Can I have all the kids who have sat through this? This is like watching paint dry for a kid. Thank you. Take a bow, guys. Take a bow. And Cameron, for our young man who's about to enlist in the Marines, thank you for your service to our country, your coming service. And Courtney, to your entire family for that. And any of our other veterans out there or military members, we appreciate your service immensely. You can probably tell this is our favorite part of the meeting because we get to recognize tremendous accomplishment. And your loved ones and your friends and your family should be very, very proud of you. I always like to say that this appointment really distills down to one singular word, and that word is trust. It means that this superintendent and this administration trust your educational leadership abilities. It means that we trust your judgment. But perhaps most importantly, it means that we trust you with our future, our community's children. And for that, your family and loved ones should be extremely proud of you. We are tonight. So congratulations and have a wonderful school year. Thank you. So we're going to pause now and allow you all to leave and go buy those wonderfully well-behaved kids some good ice cream. With sprinkles. All right, let's go ahead and move forward with our meeting. Dr. Jenkins, I don't believe we have any changes to the agenda tonight. Has that changed? Okay, so I don't believe we need a motion to adopt the agenda because it's already been done if we don't have any changes. We don't have anything on public hearings, so we're now on the consent calendar. Board members, any questions or comments on the consent calendar? No? All right, can I entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's been moved by Ms. Cadel, seconded by, I think it was Ms. Moore. Is there any debate or discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed. Nay. Nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. Before we move on, I do want to thank the Nemours Foundation for their naming rights agreement for Lake Nona High School. So thank you. I mean, it's still your thunder, Daryl, but you go ahead. I saw that on there. And we always appreciate our naming sponsors because they're helping public education. So we are now on, oh, be still my heart. We're already on Superintendent's Report. Dr. Jenkins, this has got to be a record for getting to your report.
Lovely. Three things briefly. Number one, you may have heard some discussion in the media around districts considering elimination of additional testing. I will tell you, just for clarification, for the general public especially, 7069 did not eliminate the requirement for differentiated pay and for student outcomes to be included in teacher pay. It did do away with the state VAM calculations. So it would leave some things up to district-level decisions and consideration. And so we're probably back to this notion again about whether or not you let everyone in the school just be judged based on the reading outcomes or the FSA, which is a disadvantage to certain schools and to certain teachers. And so we'll have some discussions, certainly with Wendy and our teachers' union regarding what those potentials are. There are pros and cons to that kind of movement. We do think there'll be some potential movement around some of our end-of-course exams, some ESE and CTE types of exams. But we're going to start that discussion. I would remind you that last year, we eliminated several of our own exams. And so some of the hype around elimination at this point, some of those areas we've already dealt with as a district and as a board last year. And again, we will be back to that same question of, do you place everyone under the school's reading outcomes? Pros and cons to that. We'll talk to our teacher union about that as well. Secondly, very excited, wanted to let you know that we are in some discussions. Dr. Bridgette Williams has been in discussions with Lockheed Martin and UCF around the potential of offering a master's degree program that can be at least partially funded through some grant dollars as an incentive for teachers in some of our more challenged schools. Very pleased in the past few weeks to have negotiated with our teacher union to have additional pay stipends. We think partnership with the university and with Lockheed Martin around a master's degree program at a discounted rate or potentially free of cost might also be an incentive to not only attract but retain teachers in some of our schools as well. And then thirdly, I saved something really special and dear to my heart. We are on the brink. I was actually going to make the announcement. I can't bear not to show it to you. We are on the brink of our partnership. This stalled out last year. If you remember, our Mommy Project stalled out last year. We are on the brink of an agreement. We have a hospital, a large hospital in our area, who is going to do our, it's called First Steps to Success because we wanted to get that success in there with our branding, where new mommies will get a welcome box that has a card with a message from OCPS. Chairman is going to love the book that's been selected. Oh, the, it's called, Oh Baby, The Places You'll Go, Dr. Seuss, and a special bib for a future graduate of Orange County Public Schools. So I don't, I don't want, I can't promise you that the next board meeting will be prior to the actual announcement. So I wanted to show it here officially because we have that partnership all lined that we're just looking to make the official announcement. But new mommies will get a box with a special card on behalf of the School Board and the administration, a special book, and a future OCPS grad bib. Stalled out last year. We have a partnership ready to go. We're thinking about 300 babies a month is what they are projecting for the starter program. And we are excited to be placing something that we think is of great value into new mothers' hands. It will also include a signup provision on our website so that they can get text messaging and information from us on a regular basis as their baby progresses through their first couple of years. We'll be staying in touch with them. So very excited about that. I was going to say the name of the hospital until our fantastic communications team said wait. So we'll have a big event coming up to actually announce that partnership. But we're very excited about it and pleased that we'll be able to touch so many young lives on behalf of OCPS. Chairman?
Of course.
You know, The Big Book is one of my favorites that, and my kids all laugh because they all have one and all my nieces and nephews do. But I was just working on something with Grit, and it says, and I just happened to open up to this page, "But whatever you do, things won't always go right. You might meet the Grinch in the dark of the night. His heart is too small and his shoes are too tight. He's not very friendly and very polite. You may run into trouble, as folks often do when you're trying to travel, to solace Saloo." So it talks about the fact that life doesn't always go the way you think it's going to go. And I think it just ties into what we're doing with Grit.
Yeah, I agree. And that's an actual Dr. Seuss book. When you first held it up, I thought you had just altered the title of.
It says it's adapted by Trish Rabe, R-A-B-E, from the works of Dr. Seuss. And there's, there's a preface in it. I guess it's, his widow wrote this preface. So it's an adaptation. But I love it. It's got a little baby, and it's like the birds are carrying it off into a wild blue yonder.
That's terrific. Mrs. Robinson.
Hi. I just wanted to chime in. I'm so excited, Dr. Jenkins, about the First Steps program. You know, I keep asking you about that over and over and over again. So to hear that you're right at the edge of having a partnership, I'm just so, so, so excited. So thank you for sharing that tonight. And I will make sure next time I speak to you in person that you give me more details. Thank you very much for continuing to work on that. That's very important to me.
Ms. Moore.
I'm really excited about it this well. I remember having meetings with Dr. Pope and Dylan Thomas probably four years ago. But it, and I'm just sad, Mrs. Cadel, I think she's going to get it done before your grandchild's born, and you miss both of mine. So, but anyway, let us know when it is because really, the entire Board of Communications Group, we had worked on this as an idea a number of years ago. And I know it takes time for some of the, when you're dealing with huge institutions.
Actually, it would have to launch in the next three weeks to catch up with baby number, baby boy number three.
Well, they can't miss all of our grandkids. So Mrs. Gordon or Mrs. Flynn maybe can be in time for yours. Mr. Sublett, you don't have any grandchildren yet, so there's.
Oh, please.
Mrs. Cadel and I will share. Anyway, but congratulations, Dr. Jenkins. I think it's going to be a fantastic initiative. And I'm just really pleased that we have persevered through thick and thin to make it come to fruition.
All right, thank you. I think, Ms. Moore. All righty. Let's not, let's just drop this line of dialogue right now, okay? We're not quite ready for that in my life. I'm sure it is. Mr. Rodriguez, General Counsel's Report.
Well, something a little less light, unfortunately. Just to give you an update on the House Bill 7069 litigation since we last met, there have been two weeks. We've had two more conference calls amongst the attorneys. I'm not going to go down the list of districts because at this point, there's only five that have officially said that they are in. And that includes Bay, Broward, Volusia, St. Lucie, and one more, Lee. Thank you, Mr. Cadel. But there are a number of others that the attorneys on the call are aware are either having discussions, had discussions, will be having discussions. The two biggest ones, of course, are Miami Dade and Palm Beach. Miami Dade has previously taken action to direct their General Counsel to bring them back tomorrow, an action item. I expect that that action item will result in a vote. And if they choose to join the lawsuit, I think they will join with the group. The other one to be watching tomorrow will be Palm Beach, which will also be taking up, I believe, a vote tomorrow. They also had directed their counsel to gather some additional information. Both of those counties, by the way, have commissioned and paid for legal opinions. Miami Dade had already spent about $9,000 just to get the initial legal opinions, which they were kind enough to share with the group. So we have the benefit of free legal opinions, which you don't always do get that. But Palm Beach, if they make a decision to join, they have a second decision. There seems to be some ambiguity as to whether they're going to file suit on their own or if they're going to join the group. So we're not sure about them. Citrus and Sarasota have both elected not to participate in any lawsuit. And Clay has said, not for now, but they're going to discuss it again in the future. Pinellas is undecided. Hillsborough has not discussed it. And Duval was split when they researched it. From a legal perspective, nothing has changed since my analysis before, although it does appear that there is less of an emphasis to attack the House Bill in its entirety. It seems to be more about individual components and aspects of it that are unconstitutional. But if there is a joint lawsuit and one or more of the defendants chooses to go after the entire House Bill 7069, you can always opt to file a separate complaint that would not include that particular count. And so I think you would find other districts that would be of like mind. And like, in other words, they would not want to challenge the entire legislation, just portions of it. So that's our report. We continue to have conference calls, like I said, on a regular basis on this issue. And as we get more information, we'll definitely let you know.
So I punched my button. Dr. Jenkins and Mr. Rodriguez, I think what I'd like to ask you to do, unless the Board disagrees, is I do think we need to tee this up for a formal discussion and decision. And my thinking, and this is arbitrary, Board members, but I'm thinking in the next 30 days. So I don't want you to tell us how we're going to do that just now. It's not fair to you because I before warned you. But let's figure out how we bring it before the Board for a formal decision, whether a work session, whether a discussion at the end of this meeting with an agenda item, or, I don't see any need to have executive session on all, although it does involve litigation. But let me just defer to you on how to do that, Mr. Rodriguez and Dr. Jenkins. Mr. Rodriguez.
And Mr. Chair, members of the Board, we can't go to executive session until a complaint has been filed. So we're barred from that. My suggestion is, because this is a matter of public importance, you probably will want to have it as an agenda item either at your next meeting or the one in September. I do know that other districts are watching who's on what agenda, and the lawyers are reporting back. So clearly, we'll have some more perspective after tomorrow's two votes out of Miami Dade and Palm Beach.
Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to say something very similar to what you just suggested. And I would agree. I think there might be some in our communities who are looking for us to be a lead versus hanging back and following. Now, I'm not saying that I'm agreeing or disagreeing with that. But I would think it would be of value for us
it would be of value for us to have an open discussion on our reasonings, either to support or to sit back. And so, if we could do it, I would even suggest on the 22nd that at least a start of a discussion, it doesn't have to be the full-blown decision, but there are people out there looking for us to put a foot forward.
Ms. Cadel?
I am much more comfortable waiting for about 45 days, 30 days. I really, having lived through the last lawsuit as president of the Florida School, past president of the Florida Schools Boards Association, and the retaliation that happened because of the decision to sue on whether it was constitutional, it was a very passionate discussion, and people were on both sides of the table of it. While I understand some people are looking for us to lead, we have been able to take lemons and make lemonades out of it, lemonade out of it, and do what's right for our children. And our community has supported us in making sure we can do what's right for our children. So, while I understand some people want us to put our foot out there first, I'm, my comfort level is to wait a little bit longer and see who else is, who else is in this suit, and what kind of dollars is it going to cost. So, that's, that's where I'm leaning.
Ms. Coburn?
So, I would just express my opinion that I think we need to have an open and public discussion about this, perhaps at a work session, and then bring it up as an agenda item following that.
Mrs. Gordon?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I spoke very strongly and very vocal about this, and I had requested a session, and I thought we were planning one. I thought that was already on the agenda. Is that not already on the agenda, Mr. Chairman?
We don't have a date yet for a work session.
Okay, but you all were supposed to get together with the superintendent and general counsel and come up with the date. I'm very adamant about we're not sitting back as a big board, number nine or 10 or whatever we are, and then waiting for somebody else in smaller counties to lead. I do want to commend, and I spoke with general counsel, I do want to commend Broward for stepping forward. If you don't, if you don't speak up, we don't have to dish out any funds at this particular time. I believe that's true, right, Mr. General Counsel? We don't have to dish out any money. Nobody has dished out any money. I don't think any lawsuits have really been filed. They just want to see where your guts is. Where are your guts? Where are they? I mean, you know, if you don't stand up, they're going to walk all over you. So, you better voice your opinion, even if you go down fighting, goddamn, put the red flag up and just wave the begon red flag or something, but go fighting. I mean, you got, if you don't fight for what is right, then we're going to be wiped out, and that's going nationally. So, I think we need to have a voice. I'm going to go along with Ms. Flynn in reference to her saying we need the workshop. I think I requested that through the chairman and the superintendent to get a date so that we can hash this out. Other boards went right ahead and did it. I think we could have done that. I think we should have done that. We are one of the top leaders in this state. This is affecting us. If it did not affect us, I can understand it. It's going to affect us. It is affecting us, even if you may not feel it or see it. Some of us do, because we know what comes down the pipeline. So, I'm definitely an advocate that we, we get on board as much as we can, and if we have to jump ship, then we'll, we'll put our life jackets on and head for the plan, whatever we need to do. But I think we need a voice. We need to be a part of this and not sit back. And, I mean, that's bad for the, even the middle county, the small, when I came on board, it was always the small counties, the middle counties, medium, and then the larger districts. And the larger districts, we had always stuck together. We always, because we heard each other, and we would hear each other out. So, I'm definitely in favor for you going ahead, Mr. Chairman. If the board is in agreement, I think we need to hear each other and hear what the others are saying. They must be hurting for them to step out, and if Broward stepped out and hadn't filed completely, I don't think they've filed, and what he could correct me on it. But if they stepped out, don't you know this is going to trickle down? This is going to trickle down to orange. Whatever affects Miami Dade, Broward County and Hillsborough, even Duval, believe it or not, it trickles right on into orange backdoor, and then we have to deal with it. The sale tax is going to sunny die soon, and the millage is going to sunny die, and we're going to be losing our chairman and a couple of other board members. So, we had better get this thing together. This ain't no time to dilly-dally. We really looking at, you know, new leadership, and who's going to carry the ball? And then, Joey, you already said you're going, so you can't sit. You got to give that last fling, and let's go for it, and just see what the others are saying. So, it's a matter of hearing and getting together and seeing, is this going to affect us? And if it is, then we need to have a dog in that fight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Ms. Moore?
Well, my recollection is very similar to Mrs. Cadel, because I was at that meeting, and was your representative during that very difficult time. And so, it is really not as simple as it sounds, and I hope at that work session, Mr. Rodriguez said you'll bring us your best legal advice and case law, whatever we need to evaluate whether they're going to be successful with the lawsuit, because certainly, a win would be tremendous, but how long is that going to take? And what would we have to weather in the meantime? We're already hearing threats of what that could potentially look like, and Mrs. Cadel can tell you, I went with her to meetings where we had to come up with a strategic plan. I did not serve on the committee to reevaluate how we were going to reconstitute the dues process and strategies for FSBA because of it, and all these things. We got out of that lawsuit, but we still have the repercussions. We have got our neighboring county who is not in FSB anymore, and I was thinking about how in the last year or two, we're not as close, at least for me personally, working with one of the neighboring counties. So, there are ramifications of this, because when you decide to go after the king, you better be sure you can get him. You know, I mean, that, and we've got the Constitutional Revision Committee coming up, and then the worst part of it all is now on the DCD issue, we've got the small and mid-range counties getting ready to try and, and come after some of the extra funding that, and really, we're pretty close, well, we're pretty close to that. We don't make out a whole lot on the DCD, I don't think. A little bit. But anyway, so you're starting to see this issue of us fussing and fighting with each other, which is because they're putting tremendous pressure. And I think this board has always been, no matter what we decide on the lawsuit, we have always been proactive. We've looked down the road to see what things we need to do to avoid the problem. And as a group, we've worked together, we have great staff, and we're largely unscathed, okay? And I know that's not the case with the rest of the state, and I understand. So, I wouldn't want to say, "Sorry, y'all are in worse shape, and we're not going to get involved." I want to do the right thing. But it isn't a simple, simple decision because of the ramifications of what could come down the pike legislatively next session and through that Charter Revision Commission. So, you have to consider it could get worse. And so, Mr. Rodriguez, do you think there's any sense of any of these districts that have already voted yes? If you saw 90% of all the districts jump in, it would be different than if they ended off, ended out there sort of by themselves? Do you think there's a sweet spot or some reevaluation, depending on how many other districts can involve? Because I clearly understand why Broward County has got their back up against the wall. I do. So, that's my question. Do you think they'll reevaluate being in the lawsuit based on how many other districts get in?
Ms. Moore, I think the biggest factor, I think, for most of the districts, particularly given that you've got a lot of small districts that are even more heavily impacted, is the cost of taking this on. So, once Miami Dade and Palm Beach, if in fact, they both choose to join the lawsuit tomorrow, that substantially impacts the cost. It'll be divided among those that choose to participate. The formula being discussed, and nothing has been approved, because it would require approval from all these boards in terms of how to allocate the cost, is to simply establish a set minimum for the smaller counties to say, "This is what we can afford," whether it's 5,000, 2,500, what have you, and then everyone contributes that same amount. Anything above and beyond that then gets divided based on student population. So, some preliminary numbers, just they've come back with, depending on who's in, it could range as much as $300,000 to $400,000 for the first phase as a group, but collectively, that would mean that Miami Dade might pick up 25% of that and contribute as much as $100,000. Broward might pick up 60, 70, and that would leave a district such as yours with somewhere between $40,000 to $60,000 in contributions for the lawsuit. But the smaller districts can't afford to hire, they could barely afford a couple of hours of the lawyers, so they certainly can't jump in. I think once those two larger districts are in, if in fact, they are in, that may actually convert some additional smaller to mid-sized districts to also join, because now they know that their risk financially is not as great.
Mrs. Robinson?
Thank you. I'm really glad we're having this conversation tonight. I speak with Mr. Rodriguez about this fairly regularly, and I love this open and public discussion that we're having right now. I am not convinced we need a work session to discuss this topic. I, I don't think it's involved enough to require having someone put together information, us do a work session, only to then put it back on the agenda to have the open and public discussion then. So, I, I would like to recommend that we have this wonderful open and public discussion as an agenda item, and if it gives some of my fellow board members heartburn to do that by the next meeting, then let's schedule it for the first meeting in September, board meeting in September. That gives us a month for us to see possibly how things shake out with the other school boards that are weighing it in their county, and gives us a chance to individually keep researching it and hearing information from Mr. Rodriguez as well. So, I throw that out there as a little bit of an opposing view to see if anybody else agrees with me that possibly skipping the work session, we still have the open and public discussion as an agenda item. Anybody else?
All right, well, let's go on to the next speaker, Mrs. Robinson. We'll see who wants to weigh in on that. You know, I have an opinion, but I'm going to wait a minute. Ms. Flynn?
Thank you. You know, I don't want it to go on to a point-by-point discussion now. I think what, what I expressed to begin with was to put it on the agenda and have a discussion. And that doesn't mean that we would vote for it. That's what I tried to say, is that we're not going to. I doubt if there's anybody on this table that thinks it's an easy decision. Otherwise, we wouldn't be debating it this long. But I do think that we owe our, our community discussion on it, because there are some of those out there who feel that we need to look at square in the eye. And that looking square in the eye might be to then look away from it. But we're large enough that we can be an influencer, an influencing force on this. We might be influencing another county. So, I would suggest that we skip a work session. I say we just put it on the agenda, rip the Band-Aid off.
All right. So, I don't have anybody else queued up. Here's what I'm going to suggest, and you know, if you all feel strongly to the contrary, you know, let me know, because I'm hearing both sides on the work session issue. We have time on the August 15th, Work, Rule Development Workshop, plenty of time, according to Mr. Rodriguez, to schedule this discussion. I think this merits a lengthy discussion that is not pressed for time for the regular board meeting, and if we do it on the 15th, it's a week from tonight, that also allows us, if we want to make a decision, to get it on the next board meeting agenda on August 22nd. So, that way, we can hash out our discussion. It is a public meeting. Of course, our work sessions are, will be noticed, and I'm sure will be covered by certain quarters. And then, if we want to go for it and put it on the agenda for August 22nd, we can do that. One thing I do feel a little bit strongly about is I do believe this is, I don't think anybody would disagree with this, this is a significant enough decision where we need to have a formal vote on it. In other words, it needs to be on an agenda item. It can't be just one we do by consensus. So, that's what I'm going to recommend, based on hearing from all of y'all. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for that report. That was excellent. All right. Were you done, Mr. Rodriguez? Anything else for your report?
That is it.
Okay. All right. We have one committee report, and then we're going to go on to just general discussion by board members of issues you'd like to agenda. I've got a couple of things to cover with y'all. Ms. Flynn, you had a legislative announcement?
Yes, thank you. We met last week, the Legislative Committee, and I want to thank Mrs. Gordon and Ms. Moore and Pam Gould, who called in. So, we were able to look over that draft platform. We made some suggested changes, and it will be sent from Cody Woody to all the board members. And our hope, our intention, and I say "our," the committees, the, our legislative liaisons, if we could get that platform on the agenda for the 22nd. So, board members, when you get, receive that email, if you can look at it, give it a real good, close look, and if you have any, you know, any corrections, typos, whatever changes, please let Ms. Fernandez or Mr. Cody Woody know.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Ms. Flynn, you know, I know I say this a lot, but you've taken on this yeoman's task for my entire tenure on this board. You're the one pointing to continuity.
I was thinking about that.
And it's a lot of work, Legislative Committee, so thank you.
You know...
Thank you, you know?
Thank you for that.
I can't say it's a labor of love, because I doubt you have a lot of love for it.
I've learned a lot. But, you know, the, from Scott Howard to Eileen Fernandez and Cody Woody, they're, they're really the staff members who do the heavy lift on this. And so, you know, I chair a committee meeting every once in a while and bring back the information, you know, look at the platforms and suggest it, but they're really doing the heavy lift. So, I want to make sure that everyone's well aware of the work that they do on this. But thank you. I appreciate it.
Mrs. Robinson?
Oh, I just had a, I had a question, and unfortunately, I, it's hard when I'm texting and asking them to put me in, in reference to going back to the topic before this one. Mr. Siblet, you suggested the 15th as a work session, that then we could put it on the 22nd agenda item. With that state law that requires us to post our agenda seven days in advance, does that really give us enough time? That question is for Mr. Rodriguez to answer.
Yes, Ms. Rodriguez?
So, Ms. Robinson, members of the board, the agenda must be posted seven days in advance. That is not to say that you can't have an agenda item on there if it's then determined that you don't want to keep it on there, it just gets withdrawn, and then when you adopt your agenda, you say we make one change to the agenda. So, we would put what's called a placeholder for that particular item on there. But the discussion on that Tuesday night, the 15th, will not impact, because you're going to publish an agenda seven days in advance, and you can always add an agenda item even at the table during a regular board meeting. It's the notice of the meeting that is important. So, hopefully, that answers your question.
Yes, that does. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. Board members who are now on agenda, I'm 21, policy-level issues. Anybody?
It's not a policy.
Ms. Flynn, or yeah, anything, really, general discussion. Ms. Flynn?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to thank Nemours Hospital for the partnership with Lake Nona High School in the stadium naming sponsorship. So, the Lake Nona High School stadium will be a continuation of Nemours Stadium, but it's a $123,000 sponsorship over five years. It includes... It includes an upfront amount that will bring a new stadium scoreboard. So, really want to thank that partnership with Nemours. And I also want to thank the superintendent staff. I think Dylan Thomas was in there. Adrian, I don't know all the names, but they really worked hard with negotiating a fantastic deal. So, I wanted to thank them for it, and definitely thank the Nemours Hospital. I also wanted to say that our new schools sneak peeks. They're so much fun, and also, the community is really, they're really impressed with our new schools. The new one, Timber Springs Middle School, was in an area where we had quite a journey getting there with the county and zoning and buying new property. And I have to tell you, the community is supporting that school. They're in love with it. It's a beautiful layout. I couldn't have been, couldn't be happier with it. And the HOA bought the T-shirts or the nice shirts for the staff. So, we've really, it was a struggle, but we came out with a wonderful product. And, you know, I really think that shows that, you know, even though there's sometimes controversy, it doesn't mean that it's the end of a dream. It can be even bigger. And of course, then we have Inglewood Elementary, Innovation Middle, and Laureate Park is tomorrow. So, just really, really a lot of fun and really inspiring.
[laughing]
Not yet. I wanted to bring up something that I think is unique in these new middle schools, and I'm sure in the high school, but these collaboration stations that are outside of the classrooms are really a complement to our digital technology curriculum and effort. So, really am impressed with how we're bringing not just new facilities, but new, modern facilities that keep up with technology. That's my statement.
That's a terrific one. Ms. Moore?
Mr. Chair, I didn't get a chance to talk to Dr. Jenkins, but I did get to talk to Dr. Williams a little bit about a topic. And I know the staff has done a yeoman's job, and I know that if we're not completely staffed up, we're going to be close to, and they've come up with some innovative ways to do so. And I'm sure she could give us some statistics. But I would love to have a work session at some point to look at how this board, how the community, how we can, through our students, do something in spite of, I realize, most of the pressure on dwindling folks going into education is because of state and federal policy. But again, we talked about this earlier, the reason we're not in the dire straits that some of these other districts is we've foreseen trouble. We've taken things into our own hands and figured out solutions. And so, I would love to have a work session on brainstorming ways that are not just the HR department and our principal staff's responsibility, but the community in general about encouraging more students to go into education and increasing the number of applicants in the pipeline.
I agree completely, yeah. That's a great suggestion. Definitely get that agenda. I agree. Can I just editorialize one moment? You know, one byproduct of this that never gets said, I hope, is a result of this, is I'm prayerful that market pressures, because of teacher shortages, will eventually force this state to up teacher salaries. You know, if there's anything, I mean, it's going to take a while, but if there's anything positive will come out, eventually, I'm hoping the folks in charge will realize that if we're going to attract good people to this profession, we've got to start paying a livable wage. Yeah. Ms. Moore?
I, of course, do as well, but with the present makeup, I'm not so sure that that isn't the intent. And we could talk about this at length, maybe at one of Darrell Flynn's meetings, but I think the reason I'm suggesting is, is I don't have hope right now. And I think, again, when you look at the success of this district so many times, is that we've understood the things we can't change, and we figured out ways around it, and I think this is one.
Well said. Mrs. Gordon?
Well, I think you're well-trained now, since you're thinking about leaving us, that you can make a difference.
Keep that up. We don't need to keep broadcasting.
I think you, but I think you're well-trained. I know, but an idea just came to me. Now you have experience and a wonderful education with the school system. I'm going to put out my own campaign, "You run for governor."
Oh, there you go.
And the reason why, no, I'm saying that, Bill, because a lot of people have sat on this board and came in with the legislative outlook, because that's what they were used to. But the more I'm beginning to think about it, your fight for educate, I mean, you have totally changed with the view on education, because you sat in that seat, you've been appropriations. I mean, you have appropriated money to school systems, and now, you know, I'm sorry if I'm not getting it correct, but I'm just thinking about what you did when you were in the legislature, and how you really tried to help the schools, but everybody couldn't see it. But you were able to convince a lot of people, even with the sale tax. You were able to go in and get a lot of negative people to come on our side. I'm not kidding you, because I mean, I know how hard we all worked on this, and I knew what some of the people were thinking. That may be something you want to, no, because your whole outlook have changed, and I know that if you get there, there will be money for education. So, I know that, but that wasn't going to be my comment, but I believe that I may have to let the record reflect.
I want to record this for next time she's mad at me. I'm going to play this back when I'm getting my bottom chewed out.
I'm going to be honest, at the rate we're going down, I do not believe I would change my mind on that. They probably will throw me out, but it would matter, no, because I believe you know, you see a lot, and you understand it, and you know, and I love what you said earlier. I love what you said, because Florida is a changing state. The millionaires are coming here. They're not going to come and break, a lot of their, Dr. Jenkins and I took a group through the other day, and through a couple of new schools, and they wanted to see how much money they could put in. And then, most of them say, "Well, I was a teacher. I was a teacher. I'm teaching. I'm working with you all. I'm from this. I came in," and I'm going, "Oh, my gosh. They're not going to come here on that salary," but that is something that they wanted to do. But they were like millionaires. And I was really impressed that they wanted to be in teaching and get involved within our projects and be a part of it. But that may be something, because we need somebody, you know, Tallahassee, you've been there. You know the ins and the outs. You still have connections up there and everything. But I mean, because somebody needs to make a difference. We're fighting. We're not where we used to be, and it doesn't, I don't care how much we sit here and think we're going to get there. We're never going to get back. We should be $10,000, $12,000 per child right now. We're nowhere near that, but we were on our way there when you were there. I think that's the highest we received when you were there, and I think that's the last time we received it. So, you got to go back and, you know, and look at the numbers. So, that might be something you may want to consider. You may want to consider that, okay? But I was going to read something else out of the record, which is 15.03, where the board approved tonight that they requested approval of a memorandum of understanding between the school board of Orange County and the University of Central Florida Board of Trustees. Dr. Jenkins and her staff have done so much with the Healthcare Center for the Homeless in Corporation and the Children's Home Society. They will be working with OCP, OCPS ACE. I was going to ask Dr. Jenkins if she would just tell us a little bit about what that memorandum is all about, because you did have them to come through ACE the other day. They were excited. The Home Society was there on last evening, and every time the parents were there, they were there. The Orange Blossom Health, they passed out information last night at Ivy Lane in reference to what they're going to do. So, can you give the board a little heads up on the Healthcare Center for the Homeless? You were on television. They were talking about the 7,000 we have, 7,000-plus homeless that we have. And I think Channel 9 was even talking about, in every county, how they feel so bad when they see the buses going to pick up those children on Goldenrod and on 192 in Osceola, where we live. A lot of the students where I teach, they are homeless. So, Dr. Jenkins, if you can add to the Children's Home Society and the Healthcare Center with that partnership with the University of Central Florida. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Gordon and members of the board, we're very pleased. If you recall, Children's Home Society initially was our major partner for the Evans Community School when we first started out, and since that time, they've actually migrated to become a department at the University of Central Florida, so that they can replicate those wraparound services, a community school, if you will, all across the state. And so, we're very pleased to be entering into that kind of memorandum of understanding with the Children's Home Society and the University of Central Florida for another community school effort at OCPS ACE. And they will be a part of the community school efforts, as you well realize, at our new school, just a stone's throw from this building, where we will have both community health services, not only for our students, but for their families as well. If you haven't gone on the tour yet, we certainly want to make that provision for you. They have dental stations, state-of-the-art equipment, Orange Blossom Health through several donors and grant writers and healthcare organizations in the area. That beautiful campus sits on nearly 13 acres and far exceeds, far exceeds what we could have placed at any other location in this area. And so, we're very proud of it. But more importantly, we are extremely excited about the number of partners that have agreed to be a part of the wraparound services. So, Boys and Girls Club, Mr. Rosen paying for the preschool services of our two- and three-year-olds onsite, on property, excellent pre-kindergarten through eighth-grade school located there, all of those services. And the community school concept actually being replicated by that grant through the University of Central Florida and the Children's Home Society will be a tremendous anchor for the school and for the community. UCF in Valencia will play a large role there as well. We've said to the principal and others, as we know, it certainly will be a showcase, and folks will be interested in seeing the school. Once Monday rolls around, those children will be in classes and learning, and so, others will be responsible for any tours, and classrooms will be off limits for, we won't be interrupting those children during their educational time, but there's plenty to see all around that campus. Orlando City Soccer was there with Ms. Gordon and myself and their new CEO to see the wonderful campus, and we'll be having a significant announcement with that organization in the very near future.
Right. Well, I, Dr. Jenkins, for that, I wanted to say that Chairman Sublett was also there with the distinguished group also, and I'll let you do the honors of that later on, but that was an honor. And then, there was another group that came in. These are foundations that are coming in, and you are the founding board. You are the founding board, and we talked about that, and a couple, I think one other that was on this board might be, and how we got it all together. But I've asked Dr. Jenkins to see if there's some kind of way that she can arrange a tour. We've all been trying to get to each other's school, and I think it's wonderful how, I think I got, I finally got to Inglewood. I got to a lot of them, and West Point, and then the Windermere High School. Oh, my gosh. I was able to, but I'm trying to get to every single one, but we wanted the board to go as a team, and I know Mr. Morris and Dr. Jenkins and their staff, Jesma, and I think Kathy Marsh and Lauren Roth, was trying to get your schedules, so we can go one afternoon and just, you know, just spend a little time and ask questions about Calvin and the architects. You already set it up?
No, I said there are 13.
Wow. Well, that, wow. So, I'm almost there, and I think I'm not far away. I sneak in and out, but it is just, just to see those schools, I'm like you, it's incredible. They are beautiful. You've done, you have done what you said. We bragged on Joey. We bragged on Bert Carrier, because he said, "Strike while the iron is hot." And because, see, that's when we first hit that thing with that sale tax, because we didn't step back, even when the community was telling us, a couple of people in the community said, "Don't go." We couldn't think of his name, because you've been on here so long, but I think Lori finally got his name from Deborah McGill, because we really appreciate that. And then, we talked about how Joey helped us with that unitary status. That was a major thing, and that's why we are where we are. And then, Bill came on in with the tail end and all the sale tax and stuff, just carrying it all through. So, everybody had a part, and that's why this school is, all of the schools are ours, but this is the one that we want to be modeled in practically every community throughout the United States, even in our own districts. We can work toward that as a board. There's no reason why we could not get this part, because you know what? Most of those partners want to be a part. They want to help the children, and that's why I know that that achievement gap, there will be a difference made in that, and these children will be educated like Dr. Jenkins said to the highest. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being with us and carrying the mayor through the building. I think he carried Mayor Buddy Dye and his staff through.
He was impressed. He was impressed. It was a great tour. And by the way, I know every board member will get over there, but you know, it warmed my heart, because, you know, our vision has always been that this school is sort of going to be our shining city on the hill, that we bring folks from throughout the country through. And I have to tell you, my first time through it, since all the furniture and fixtures have been installed, just blew me away. It really, it really did. To see brand-new dental chairs there, for example, for dental examinations in the medical clinic, and the medical equipment there in the clinic. And I didn't realize this, Mrs. Gordon. I guess I wasn't paying attention. I knew the school was going to have a gym. I didn't realize it was going to be a separate gym from the Boys and Girls Club, so there's not one, but two gyms in that school. And it's just, I mean, it really was impressive, and I think the mayor liked it. He was impressed, and we had quite an entourage. So, and our tour leader, Mr. Morris, I can't remember his name, but he did a terrific job. Calvin, he's one of our supervising project managers. Calvin did a good job. Yeah, so he made us proud. He made us proud. To Calvin, we said, "Thank you." He really did. All right. We have Ms. Cadel.
Well, mine's on a totally different subject. One of the things, I think we all got invited to go welcome the bus drivers back, and like it came, maybe two days before, we needed to go welcome them. And I would like to suggest that before we break for the summer next year, that we do something like we do for the employees in this building, and we do a welcome video, because those bus drivers, they are the first people who see our children, and they are the one that can make or break a child's day. And if they're driving field trips, or they're driving athletic events, they see them when they've won, and they dry tears when they've lost. And so, I think it would be a great thing for this board, instead of waiting until we're trying to get schools started just before we shut down in June, you know, sometime in June, that we tape some sort of message letting our bus, our transportation people know how much we appreciate the job they do each and every day. You know, it's just one of those things that will show them that we value what they do. So, to tag on to that, we had the, we had the new teacher event at Edgewater. And I'm hearing wonderful things about it, but I thought, and I've asked Dr. Jarrah if it's possible, I would love to get the name of every new teacher in a District 1 school, and just write them a little note and say, "Thank you so much for choosing Aloma Elementary to teach in. I can't wait to work with you. Have a great year," and sign it, Joey, and send it out. So, I think, you know, it's not dollars, but it's just that, you know, we care that you chose us. And I think that, you know, it tectiles on to what we were talking about in showing them that we value that you've chosen Orange County Public Schools. So, I'm hoping to get a list, and I'm hoping to be able to do that, just to let them know that I'm glad they're here. So, you know, those are just a couple of things. And I don't know if Ms. Robinson's still there, but you know, I wasn't allowed to drive for about two weeks, and then I didn't go over near the new Audubon K8. But if anybody wonders, and they don't live in that neighborhood, the walls are up. It's amazing. It's like all of a sudden, I mean, I missed about two weeks, but those walls are up. It's like, all of a sudden, I mean, I missed about two weeks, but those walls are up, so it's moving right along. It looks good, John.
Mrs. Robinson.
I know, tilt wall's amazing, isn't it? You don't have a school, and then two days later, you have a school. I punched my, had to punch my light so that I could mostly throw my support behind an idea that Ms. Gordon had earlier, and that's that Governor Siblet sounds really good. Do you like the, you like the sound of that, Bill?
We have votes.
Def, definitely, Governor Siblet.
So this is televised, so let's move off this, okay? Go on to something else, please.
I did want to say that, that, yes, I'm excited about the school year starting. The schools are looking beautiful. Mr. Morris and his facilities department always do an amazing job, and I agree with the comments about the ACE School and the community school that's going there. Our partners are just amazing. The people that partner with us to bring the community school concept to Evans and now to the ACE School, I just really appreciate them. So I just had to pipe in and put in my thanks to all of our wonderful partners. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. All right. Board members, lastly, I've got a couple announcements. First of all, we do have our retreat coming up on August 24th. We had a little bit of a brainstorm after the last meeting. One of you said something, and we're going to do it at one of our Orange Technical Colleges, our Winter Park Campus. And we can then just walk right across the street from the campus over to Winter Park Village and have dinner there after our retreat. We do need retreat topics. I asked Mrs. McGill yesterday how many we had received. I think we only have two retreat topics.
You have mine.
That's not necessarily a bad thing. That may mean that I've retreated you out of, or exhausted you out of retreat topics, or we have, so you don't necessarily need them. I think we do have yours, Mrs. Gordon.
No, you don't.
Okay, we don't? Okay.
I want you to know, I set mine in.
Okay, well, we have yours. I didn't ask whose we had, but...
I had to revise them.
But time's...
I had two, and I set that in.
Time's running short, so get them in so we can get an agenda together. And then you have the new work session schedule in front of you. You know, normally I wouldn't mention this, but sometimes you all seem to like this. I taped, I just want to let you all know, a TV show today called In Focus that airs on Sunday at 11:30 with Alison Walker Torres did it, but it was a panel, and Speaker Corcoran was on that panel. And it was supposed to be on digital technology and learning and how we're going to digital technology. And I don't know, you all watched it, tell me what you think. It took all of about 60 seconds for him to go for the jugular, and we were off to the races. So, yeah, a little bit. So I tried to do, I tried to do it with a smile, but I thought, you know, it's so funny, you all love it when we mix it up, don't you? So, let's just suppose, say, there were three segments in the show. It's a half-hour show, and he and I did most of the talking in the first two segments, so I finally just said, okay, I don't say a word in the last segment. We really talked very little about digital technology. I have to tell you all, and you know, I know this is a public meeting, I'm just going to say it publicly, some of the things that were said just boggled my mind. You know, there was a little lead-in segment on smart boards, and again, this is a fluff type of panel discussion. There was a superintendent for Manatee on this panel, somebody we all love, Sarah Sprinkle was on the panel, Speaker Corcoran was on the panel, and Jack Latvala's son, who I don't know, Chris Latvala, who's the state rep, was on the panel. So they did a little promo segment about smart boards and how, not us, the different school districts, investing them, $30,000 per smart board, which is expensive to me. I know, I know we don't spend that on ours, but the first thing is said was, well, that money should be going to teacher salaries, which is galling because we can't spend capital dollars on teacher salaries. So that's sort of what started it off. And then tax cuts brought up, and he said, I was confused that we didn't cut any taxes for education. That's a referendum in two years. And I said, no, actually, you rolled back the required local effort of the FEFP. And then he threw out there about three or four times the phrase, failure factories, you know? And then the coup de grace, or as you like to put it, the creme de la creme, Mrs. Gordon, or the cherry on top of the sundae. The one that really got my goat was he talked about how districts need to pay more in teacher salaries. So I pointed out to him that the legislature funds teacher salaries entirely, and I was glad to hear him say that, and we certainly hoped that they would put some more money into teacher salaries. So, you know, I think the thing, and you all are being great, but the thing that just bothered me the most about it was just the sheer ignorance, either that or the sheer...
Arrogance.
No, no. It's a word I'm looking for. Disingenuousness? I don't know if that's even a word. If the knowledge is there, the disingenuousness and the statements made, I mean, everything from suggesting that we pay for teacher salaries with capital dollars and not understanding that, to accusing us of not adequately funding teacher salaries when he should know as the Speaker of the House, our funding comes directly from the state for that. So I don't know if I carried the flag very well. I tried to smile a lot and be very pleasant, but inside I was, no, no, we'll watch it first. You may not think I did that great a job, but I was boiling. I was boiling.
I'm sorry. How do we find it to watch it?
Well, it's 11:30 on Sunday on Channel 13.
Oh, it's on this Sunday?
It's coming, well, either this Sunday or the next, 11:30 and 8:30. It's called In Focus.
Okay, so it hasn't aired yet.
Yeah, and I probably built that up. It's not that big a deal, but I wanted you all to know about it because you're going to hear about it.
Okay, so it's this Sunday?
Maybe this Sunday. They weren't sure whether it was going to air this Sunday or next Sunday, but it's called In Focus, and it's on 11:30.
I thought it had already appeared.
No, it's taped today. It was just, so the hosts loved it because they love a good brawl. And we didn't talk at all about digital technology. I mean, we really didn't. We almost, you know, and at the end, I loved it because your colleague from Manatee, you could tell, she got her dander up a little bit at the end, too, and it took a while, but at the end, she sort of jumped in as well, so.
She's good, too.
Yeah, so anyway, heads up for that. So that's it. Anything else for the, good to the order? All right. Ms. Blackmore, can I see you after the meeting, please, if you don't mind? So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
All right. Good job.